So, good evening. This is our special meeting of the school board of Broad Island Olivia Lake Lilian Independent School District, number twenty-five thirty-four. And we have two, as it is a special meeting, it's just called for two specific items on our agenda. So, we're gonna keep anything we talked about to those two items. And we'll begin with the approval of our agenda. Motion is made by Benson. Seconded by Bookdell. Any discussion or questions on anything? Hearing nothing, we'll vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. I forgot to mention Bryant is, he ended up with a late patient and he hopes to be here as soon as he can get here. So, recognition of visitors to the board meeting. Thank you all for coming out tonight. And hopefully, hopefully the acoustics are better in this room definitely than in the gym. So, we'll do our best to make sure that we can, everybody can hear and that the recording is also good for us. So, moving on to new business. So, number one, discuss and select superintendent candidates to interview. So, here's what we are doing tonight. We are going to discuss the seven candidates we have. And we'll do it in such a way that, because all of these candidates are confidential right now, right? That's why we're looking at them in colors. So, they're confidential and we need to keep our discussion very general as to not give anything away on, until once we decide who we're going, who we're going to interview tonight, then those names are public. But until then, they are not. So, one thing I wanted to point out before we begin. So, I put a couple of things at your station. One is the superintendent search interview procedural recommendations. So, that's just, this will be what we'll follow for our interview process. So, I just wanted to point that out. The second thing I put on your station is a schedule. This is just so, we are going to have two groups interviewing, okay? And so, if we're doing forty-five minute interviews, this is how it would look like for the day. So, say we start at one o'clock, which is kind of what we had put down. And so, if we had four, this, and I was just conceptualizing, I was just trying to get it in my head how we go through four candidates. So, if we had four candidates, this is what it would look like and this is what the times would be. So, I guess in, in thinking about this, I would recommend doing like an even number, either two or four. Because if you do three, then one group is just going to be sitting there for, you know, an hour with nothing to do. And then, so, and it will still be the same length of time, so, for all of us. So, just, just something to keep in mind. Alright, so, as we go through here, I know Bryant did give me a couple of candidates if he didn't get here in time. A couple of candidates he liked. So, maybe we want to go around and just say, if you have, like your two, top two candidates. Bryant's, Bryant's were orange and red. So, Jamie, if you wanna...
You're pushing the pressure on me.
Sorry. Yeah, go ahead Theresa.
My top two are also orange and red. I also did have two others that I, that would be good to interview and that was pink and the dark green.
Okay.
Those were kind of my top four really.
Okay.
Those were my four that I thought that I would like to see.
Okay. Anybody else ready? Melissa?
Yep, I ranked mine, one of your seven, and I have orange and red. And then, dark green and pink are the other two that stood out more.
Okay.
I couldn't pick them. I just wouldn't mind doing all. Just because you have a broader bunch.
I do know.
I really had a hard time taking it down.
There was a couple to me that, well, yeah, there was just the one that I, the job history scared me quite a bit.
There was two.
Yeah.
There was two, there was two that the job history really...
Yeah.
That's kind of the first thing that I got and so...
Said tan and light green.
Yep.
Yep, that's what I had too. So, I guess tan and light green are, for me, they were no's. I mean, I just put, put no right off the bat.
Which ones?
Tan and light green.
Those are the ones that I had most of the notes on, like, the salary bonuses, the can't contact employer, love the jobs.
Two years where there was nothing.
Yeah. Yeah, there was just some red.
Yeah, orange and red were my tops as well. And I did also, the, the pink and the dark green or Kelly green were my two others.
I did make some phone calls.
I'm sorry Melissa.
No.
What did, what did, yes, you... Cause you said orange and red, right? Melissa, you said orange and red and then the pink and dark green. Okay.
Yeah, I just, when we get to the point of more discussion, I can open my eyes.
Okay. I'm sorry, maybe I didn't, I probably should've kind of told you how we were gonna...
Yeah, cause I didn't know that we have...
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
That's alright.
But just, yeah, take your time.
I didn't use the point system. I don't work from home.
No, I didn't either.
That was fine.
No.
I did it on the first one and then I didn't do it on the second.
I made general notes, but I also made several phone calls to various people. And that's how I, I felt confident coming with gathering information from other sources. It was very difficult to just read, you know, you could some information. I have, I collected more information by talking to other people. Were we able, were we supposed to call the references? That's why we were doing the meetings, right?
Right.
What we could do.
I, I think it's, it's something you need to be very careful about because they are not named. I, you know, I'll be honest, when I was looking through, I saw a guy that had worked with my brother-in-law. And so, I, I texted him and he called me back right away. And he said, this, this, he said no. So, I just, you know, I, that's the only, cause I knew right then and there I could get an honest opinion. So, to help whittle it down for me a little bit.
There was one interview that I've been to a couple different, I hope you could just tell online, if you just search them online, they have different...
I did that.
And I had a very close contact and I understood that she went to, had that person, like, was interviewing. You know, so I was able to communicate that one, just saying maybe some things you could pay down. Purple was one that, that was one of them, so do not waste your time for an interview.
Okay.
Do not.
Oh, really? Okay, because that one I was kind of...
I just had a question mark, yeah.
Quite a while and the experience, you know, the lack of experience was kind of what, I mean, put on the way of it.
I put didn't like on that one.
You what?
I put no.
So, that puts purple...
Well, I, yeah, I didn't choose, but I'm saying it wasn't quite as...
Okay.
But I do like the rest too.
Okay.
But I do know that I searched also.
Okay.
And found out that there was one candidate in red or someplace else.
Okay.
They were very, I mean, that's one that I really liked, which one was that?
Red? Was that red?
You can say your color.
Yeah, just say the color.
Red.
Okay, okay. So, that was one of your ones you liked Sandy?
I did, I do like green and red.
Okay, green and red.
Yeah.
So, well...
I was a little disappointed in orange, cause there wasn't a lot of information there.
Um, that...
It was kind of thin unless...
That might've been, that might've been an oversight because I don't think the full, um...
Yeah.
Yeah, the application was there, but it's, it's here now, so...
I was like, where's the rest of it?
Purple, but, so purple, tan and light green, I think we can say are no's, right?
To me, they are.
Cause purple, tan and light green.
I, the information that I received, it was based on red flag.
Right.
One of those. You're all green? Oh, there was stuff on the light green, yeah. Plank for me on the, on the light green. And that was a person who had several one positions, jumping out of school to school to school. I wish I would have this one for me earlier today.
So, if that eliminates three, we're down to four. And I guess then it's just kind of...
So, out of these, I know, I don't, who all has a license and sort of...
Well, and they're, they're getting, I know, a couple of them are getting certified, like, it will be...
I think that dark green was in the process, wasn't it?
What was the one that the white ones you guys didn't like or what was that all about? Cause there were some things I started on there that I didn't see, but there were some things that I thought were important qualities.
Um, this is the, uh, this is the one that I was advised. Absolutely not. So, light green, yeah.
That one, that one screamed narcissist to me.
Well, and, okay, so if you look at...
Oh, I was scared. I was like, oh heavens, no, no, no. And then actually, I did a Google search on this one too. Nope, not that one. I think it was the light tan.
If you look at, um, there's a lot of positions cut due to budget cuts.
Yeah.
And that's not necessarily why, is what I was told, so. Lot of different jobs.
I would like to interview four.
Okay.
So, you were talking earlier that tan and light green was, probably not?
Right, and Melissa had found purple not to be...
Do not waste your time for an interview, it was wrong clear. Now, that would, you were thinking that, we found out quickly that he, this person did not have the qualification for a leadership position. Not impressed at all. He has a big heart, but would not be somebody wanting to leave the district again, so do not waste your time. I think it's really hard because without actually visiting with this person and then dialoguing with them and going through some questions with them and getting their answers and hearing it firsthand. Cause I, you know, as much as you want to trust people that way, call it, sometimes everybody's got their own personal agenda too, you know what I mean? They, either you like someone or you don't, or you've had an inner help with them. But for doing this for the first time, that's the only thing for me, it's like, I don't know, they're just like little things that I start and...
I can, I can, I can give you the person's number I talked, I, I talked to and, and he will walk you through it, so, but if you want.
The information I received on purple was from a different search process. A very close friend of mine was an individual like us and so that's where I got my information. It was not from the school district, it was...
Well, we currently have...
From this year, I can see that. Probably my least favorite, but...
We have orange, red, pink and the dark green. Which...
The ones I had, the three I had, the top three I had was the orange, red and pink.
Okay.
I just did three.
Okay.
I mean, if I, if I went by my numbering, that was number four.
Okay.
There was something about, now, something, one that said they checked on tan and that was the one, was that you?
There's one that, um...
I didn't check in any of this, what stood out to me in the hand was just the, just the two years that were on my board. And just the, the job switching so much, but also what stood out to me was some of the dates. If you're looking at principal superintendent, you think it was, you know, July first to June thirtieth. But this person, it shows, you know, one job ended in October of two thousand and eighteen. So, some of the dates just seemed a little bit off to me, like, like what, why would you quit? Or what, I don't, I don't have an idea, but you know, it just...
Seems suspicious.
It really seems suspicious and I just, that job is...
There was a lot of red.
And that just kind of scared me.
That, that person at the Malibu interim was retired. And that's the information I received.
I'm sorry, what did you say, Melissa?
He was an interim.
Yeah.
And he worked more part-time.
That's right. I was gathering that from, cause he had, let's see, there's five years down here and it did say that was true.
Right, yep.
So, I can understand why that other one is advancement or moving.
And two years ago, the position he was in, it was, the position was reopened because the district wanted to go full-time. And that was not something he wanted to pursue. That's, I mean, that to me just looking more of the interim than versus full-time, I thought that was probably not a good fit for him, plus presenting...
Not for any long, not for any long-term gain.
This person would be good at maintaining a district, but not taking on big tasks in the district. As, you know, the role that he has played in the district, city district is working in. These, you know, big things are going on, would not be a good fit for a district like ours, that's, that's...
And there was one that they only had school board numbers. Was it this one? That only had school board members for references?
Yeah.
I was like, I don't like that.
Well, you, you wonder, you just kind of wonder why.
Yeah.
You know, so...
I didn't like that.
That was actually, I think it was red.
Yeah, I think you're right Melissa.
Uh, I haven't, no.
Yeah, I do too. It was red.
Yeah, I didn't like that. Only, yeah, only board members.
Yep, I wrote that down as well.
He appeared to be, he interviewed in multiple districts this spring. And it appeared that he was final, you know, he got to the final, you know, after whatever, top five, top four, top five, whatever it was in the bubble. Has not been on the position.
Well, I mean, he's, so red has been, I mean, one that every, almost everybody has named, so, is that...
I'm, I'm definitely...
I'm for red.
Okay, okay, alright, I just wanted to make sure that, yeah.
He's, there's a key, there's a lot going on there. I like that.
Okay, okay, good.
I like everything that he had.
Okay. But, I mean, so if you remove purple, tan and light green, we've got orange, red, pink and dark green. Are we...
Wait, just a second, there was something about, um, there was stuff about light green. And I had quite a bit written down about what that person did.
Yeah, I, I am not gonna support that one, I'm sorry, I just, I've, I...
I have a lot of red flags on him.
Yeah.
Lots of jobs fishing.
The information that I gathered from my person was very negative and not, not something that I think we would want to bring to bold.
And that was the one Theresa, remember when I said you couldn't even read their interfolio?
There's that one, you got that...
There was two pages, yeah. And I just think that was, I don't, there was a lot, I have a lot of red flags. I said not my favorite, highest if you looked like point wise, but not my favorite.
I also, um, for Lendry, um, too many reasons for leaving not available.
Right.
And answering no to me, we'd contact your employer.
Yeah.
I was a little suspicious too.
Yeah, you should be able to contact your employer. That was the experience right now, current position. Maybe contact your employer, no?
I did not hear anything positive on this one. Do not anything on interviews, the first comment that I received, why I asked for purple, are you telling me?
No, light, yeah, light.
Light, whatever, I'm sorry.
Mint green, light green, yeah.
That's interesting because that's, it's interesting what they put down here when we meet first person.
Yeah, it is, it is so hard when you, yeah.
You guys don't like them, I guess.
I just, I... Well, are we looking, are we feeling good about orange, red, pink and Kelly green or dark green?
I have my reservations about orange. I do too, because I feel like, I, I, not a personal one though, cause I can't say... I was just disappointed, I was disappointed there was not a reservation. But now there is.
There is now and I, I apologize for that, so...
I was just kind of like, where's the rest of it? But yeah, now we got it.
Right.
That's good. I like to have all the stuff on there.
Yes, yes. So, tonight, who we pick, you can take the packets of the people we pick and leave the ones we don't pick behind, please.
Good, I'm gonna rewrite the orange and red.
Right. So, um, so I guess, if, if somebody could make a motion, naming the...
I will make a motion that we are going to interview Kelly green, pink, red and orange.
I'll second.
Motion is made by Bolin, seconded by Bookdell. Any discussion?
I just want to make a note that... I just have reservations about it.
Okay.
But it's like you can't talk about it. I would like to explain it, but I, I know I can't. But that's, well, we'll be able to talk a bit during the interview process. So, that's probably maybe a good time. Alright.
Mm-hmm, yep.
Otherwise, yes, so then, that could be about it.
Alright. Hearing that, any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, we will vote. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any opposed say nay. Motion carries. Alright, so, um, I'll, I'll just name the names off, just so the public can hear the people we're talking about. Just gonna make sure I get the right ones there. So, we have John Wiley. We have James Menton. We have Corey Reynolds. And Patrick Bierman are our candidates that we will be interviewing. Alright, so now, what will happen now is I will contact each one of these people and set up interviews for Tuesday. And so, we will use the four-person schedule here. I will make sure that we have water and probably snacks, cause it's gonna get long. But we'll, we'll do the best we can.
We're interviewing this Tuesday?
Yes.
Oh, my lanta.
Did you read your email? Just ask, just ask it.
I thought I did.
Yep, the eighteenth, so... Alright, so the second, and I will, when I, when I find out, you know, when I call these people and get confirmed interviews, I will send out an email saying who's going to be when and, and update the schedule for everybody and like what time you need to be there and, and that kind of stuff. So, that information will be coming. So, our, just our second point of discussion here, and it's not a motion, it's not an action item, so, we don't need any of that. It's just discussing, in the work session, I talked about, um, we talked about the questions and they're actually on the top, they were on top of your packet that Joy gave you, so all those. Where can I find mine? So, cause I got too much to, oh, they're right here. Okay, um, so just, we, we gave these out at the work session and I just wanted to, I just had said, you know, look them over and if there's anything, you know, these, these are tried and true questions, but if there's anything you think is lacking or, I mean, we have to keep them fairly general. You don't want the questions to, um, Bryant says he's gonna be leaving here in about ten minutes. So, we'll see if we're hearing up Bryant.
But run, run quick.
Yeah. What?
I think we should come back when we, last time. We had questions for interview, the first interview and then the second set of questions for, the second interview.
Yes.
So, would it be appropriate to, and which ones should be asked if we're giving them down? Out of the, out of the fifteen questions we have?
I do have, and we could do that too. I do have some questions that, um, for us, for a second interview, we need a second interview. I do have questions for that. There were like forty of them on the sheet, so, um, they, they need to be whittled down because forty is way too many. And so, I, I actually haven't done that yet, so, that is something I'll have to send out. But I think we, we were, but we could, I mean, if you think some of these could be better second interview questions than first, um...
How many questions is appropriate to ask?
I, I think this is, I think this is good. I mean, we, we take turns asking questions. You know, I think these are all very applicable to, to what this person, we're gonna, what we're going to ask this person to do.
I like them too, cause not every question's gonna come with a really long...
True, true, so it won't, yeah, take forever, so, I just, yeah.
Does the other committee ask the same question?
No, they have, theirs are a little different. So, yeah, they are, they're not asking the exact same questions, so. And Mr. Flann is heading up that group and so he is taking care of, of all of that. So, this is just our, our area to focus in on. And so, I just kind of wanted to go over, just touch base with the, any of these. Something just seems like you don't want to ask it or, or maybe ask it in a different way. I just wanted to make sure we had some flexibility.
Question nine? Should we change that a little bit?
Yeah.
This is the school?
Yeah, cause I was looking at it.
Oh, yes. Okay, for our school site. Okay. Alright. Anything else you guys feel?
You know, my favorite question for an interview question is, and there's no wrong or right answer. Do you know this one?
If you, if you're an animal, what would you be?
No. If you were a pickle in a pickle jar, where would you be? The top, the middle or the bottom and why? I always asked that and I was like, well, I don't want to be at the top, cause they get eaten first. I don't want to be at the bottom, cause I get sour. Be in the middle.
Okay.
The bottom is the best.
But you know what they, they incorporate that as, is then if you say you're at the top, you want to be a leader, you want to go, go, go. Middle, you're a follower and the bottom, you're just there.
I would think the bottom is the follower. I don't think that way.
I was like, oh my gosh, what kind of question is this?
Yeah, I, that's when I...
That's what I ask our pastors when we've been on.
Okay.
Tell me why.
That's something that I, like, will have to ever, I ever have to interview again. I'm gonna have to think about that one if I get asked, so...
I think they look good.
I do too.
I'm Gucci with that. So, we'll have four of these. So we'll have four of these.
Yes, and, and then we'll use this sheet as our evaluation of each, I mean, you have this to write on. And then, if you, if, we'll just see how this works, I don't know if you wanna use points, we'll just have, we'll just have to see how it goes. They are, but I mean, I, I kinda look at it, like, maybe it's just like, well, I feel this person has excellent communication skills. I mean, I probably would, I would check things, you know, just like, and maybe if it's really good, I'll put a star by it, you know, I. So we just, yeah. I think we'll just have to kinda use these as we.
As a guidance.
Yes, and it's really more for us to kind of make sure that we're hitting all the points. So. Alright, with that, if we don't wanna talk about questions.
So I, I have a dumb question, cause I've never been through this process, so what happens if you call some of these and they're like, eh, I've already taken another job or eh, I don't want to do this?
Then we'll go down to three, you know.
We didn't want, but maybe can, yeah.
Yeah.
I was just curious, I'm not sure how that.
Question two, just to say, what if we don't feel confident one hundred percent with any of them?
Yep, then we.
Then what do you do at that point?
Well, we'll have to figure that out, I mean, we can, guy, like, you know, because last time, so with the, with Mr. Bransway's position. Actually, we, we were, we had a guy lined up and then he kinda backed out and then he was kinda back on again. And then, you know, we'd gone through all the applications, but then we had gotten to late applications. You know, they had come in after, they had like a three o'clock deadlines, and then we chose to, the board chose to go back and get those two candidates that were late applicants. And, and interview them, and that worked out, it worked out good for us, so we'll see, I mean, we may have to cast them that out again, we'll see.
And do you know ahead of time, we know it's full, full time, but do we know if it's one year, two year, three year?
No, no, we don't, no, that's something that the board will negotiate with the contract, yep, yeah. So, alright. Any other questions before we adjourn?
So what happens, okay, I guess, I just wanna kinda know, okay, so we go, we do the interviews on Tuesday?
Yep.
Then we get together and.
Yep, we meet with the staff student community group, okay, we meet with them, to get some feedback.
We're gonna go back and forth with them about what.
Well, just, yeah, exactly, yep, and so I just, I have that kinda slated for an hour. Well, kind of, I do have it slated for an hour, and then at six o'clock, we'll have a special meeting. And if we, so, you know, there's a couple of options here, so, you can either do a second interview, which would be on the twentieth. Was in the evening on the twentieth, or we felt good enough while one person, that we could just pick someone at that point. And just skip that second interview and then have them, um, probably come earlier on the twenty, whenever. Twenty-fourth, I think, is our regular meeting, and do like a little negotiation session with them and then accept the contract at that, at the meeting.
What happens if we have, like.
So if we don't.
True and true.
Well, I mean, hopefully, you know, if we do have a second interview, hopefully at that point, that we could be able to, you know. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the hope, but it, so it, it could happen after this, or it can happen, you know, after a second interview. Or it could not happen at all and we have to put the net out again, so, so we'll see.
So what happens, let's just say, scenario, we go through the whole thing, somebody backs out. Somebody already got another job, it doesn't work, whatever, and we get to the point of, we do have to actually go back. And we're getting to the point of the end of June. Do we have anybody?
Can't.
That could slip into the time beam to continue to sign for us, do we have anybody that?
You know, I, I can check on that, I don't know how that's gonna go, but. But yeah, yeah, well, we can, I mean, hopefully, that doesn't happen. So, but yes, I, that is something I will check on to make sure that we're covered in that stead, so.
I would think Lindsay could.
Well, we'll find out, I'll find out, so, before we, before we go too far down the rabbit hole there.
Sandy, wanna give me your three then?
Oh, true. So, um, we heard back and forth, when it came to the staff, how were they picked?
They volunteered, and, and if you read my emails, we said we would have an equal amount from each town, four staff. And we are actually gonna have two students, I don't know if they're gonna be there for the whole time now, cause, but the Nancy Yonkey did find two students that volunteered today.
The only reason I'm asking is because I had, um, a couple of staff come up to me and said that they never received anything.
They volunteered, there was, it was sent out, correct, Joy? Yep, so, there, there, an email sent out, or how was that? Cause I, it was on the website, it was on Facebook, it, um, I know, an email was sent to all parents, so. I don't know if it was sent to all staff. The union sent it out, so, that, I, you know.
I mean, I was just curious.
Yeah.
Couple of them asked me and I didn't know how it was pronounced.
Right. It wasn't, no one was handpicked, it was all volunteer, so. Yep. So. Alright, anything else? Alright, I've been looking for a motion to adjourn.
Some will believe.
Motion is made by Bolin, seconded by Bookdell. Uh, and we will vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, say nay. Motion carries, seven thirty-six, and I'm gonna get ahold of Brian here, tell him. Thank you all very much.